Good morning. Welcome to the Benita Springs Zoning Board of Adjustment and Appeal. My name is Richard Donnelly. I'll be acting chairman of the board today. As we get started, any of you in the audience who have cell phones, if you could please turn them off at this time. And we will proceed with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the notification.
Our God, please bless this assembly today. Give us clear thinking. Bless our troops abroad and bless this assembly. Amen.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Robert Insirby, Chairman Brunswick; Pete Pastore, Vice Chairman, Richard Donnelly;
Here.
Frank Lyles; James Worster; Stephen Kissinger.
Here.
Are the mics on?
I believe they are.
They don't seem to be on.
There they are.
Oh, here they are.
Okay, so we're calling the first case, which is 276-99, Dorch Avenue, lot width variance. It is a request to reduce by 6.6 feet, not 0.6 inches, a reduction from the 75-foot minimum lot width requirement for the construction of a duplex structure in the two-family Conservation TFC Residential District located at 276-99 Dorch Avenue. At this time, I'm going to swear in the witnesses. We have a new planner today, Michael Fegan. He's not new to me, but he's new to you guys. At this time, I'd like to have him sworn in and do a short voir dire to have him tendered as an expert in land use and planning. Mike, do you prefer to sit here or do you like to go up to the podium? What's your preference?
I'll sit here.
Okay, and you'll need to speak in the microphone so they can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, do you swear firm testimony you provide today's truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your full name for the record.
Michael Allen Fegan II.
And where are you employed?
I'm employed with the City of Benita Springs CH2M Hill.
And what, in what capacity do you work for CH2M Hill?
My official job title is Planner One. I'm also the full-time planner on-call for the city.
And you're compet-- now, is this the first time you are testifying in any case? Have you ever been sworn or testified before?
This is the first time I've been sworn in.
Okay. We're going to have you tendered as an expert in land use and planning, and that means for the tribunal, you happen to have more knowledge than other people by virtue of your experience, your skill sets, your training, education, prior testimony, working on cases similar. So I'm going to ask you some questions. Where did you go to college?
I went to Florida Gulf Coast University.
And what degrees have you obtained from there?
I obtained a bachelor's in political science and a master's in public administration.
And do you also work at another job in addition to community development?
I do. I also work for Florida Gulf Coast University in the capacity of an adjunct faculty member for the College of Arts and Sciences.
And what do you teach at Florida Gulf Coast?
I teach American national government.
And do you teach, have you taught any other courses there also?
I have taught state and local government and politics as well.
Have you seen similarities or issues similar to the case on hand before? Is this your first time seeing a variance or being involved in a variance?
This is my first time being involved, yes.
Okay. Have you been involved administratively to help assist Ms. Gensen?
Yes, I have.
Could you maybe tell them what you did in that capacity?
In that capacity, typically what I do is I go through and I check for sufficiency items. I also check the request versus the black and white of the code, and I provide feedback.
Do you, how many times a day do you maybe do sufficiency checks on property?
I do a lot of sufficiency checks in my normal day-to-day work. A lot of my interaction with the public is with regards to the Land Development Code, specifically the zoning and development regulations portion, so it's a normal part of my job.
And do you sometimes consult with the city attorney, sometimes with other staff members for what you need to resolve any issues?
Yes, for additional clarification, I do speak with the city attorney's office.
Okay. I believe at this time, he can be tendered as an expert in land use and planning as it relates to the city of Benita Springs.
Any comments from the board?
I'm sorry, I missed. How long have you been employed by the city?
Since December of 2013.
Thank you.
No further questions for you.
No further questions, unless you guys have any other questions about Mr. Fegan? Okay, at this time, I'll swear in everybody else. Please raise your right hands. The applicants, anybody else who's going to testify in this case. Do you swear firm testimony you provide today's truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now, we have the applicants, and I ask for you to state your name on the record for the court reporter.
I'm Thomas Lawrence. I'm Thomas Lawrence Enterprises and Carolina Street Homes.
Okay. And I also have Jackie Gensen, who has been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning, and John Dolmer. They've been, he has also been tendered previously as an expert in land use and planning, and Rick Steinmeier, a citizen who's an interested party observing the case. At this time, Mr. Fegan, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, first of all. I have a quick presentation for all of you to sort of hammer the points home a little bit. Hopefully, we won't take up too much of your time this morning. This case tends to be rather black and white as far as staff is concerned. Once again, as Audrey suggested, this request is to grant a 0.6-foot reduction from the 75-foot lot width requirement, which is necessary in that zoning designation in order to build a duplex structure. So we're looking to go from 75 down to 74.65, I believe it is. And that's just what we're talking about here. The zoning designation of the property is two-family conservation, more commonly known as TFC2. It is one of the conventional residential zoning districts that allows for duplex structures by right, provided that the development regulations are adhered to. Those development regulations being at least 75 feet in width and at least 100 feet in depth, and a minimum of 7,500 square feet in area. And again, just to confirm, the portion of the code that we are requesting a variance from, that the applicant is requesting a variance from, is Section 4-489, which describes these zoning development regulations in our Land Development Code. This is a picture of the 1912 plat in which the subject property is a part of. I believe it's also one of your attachments there for your file. The next page, I went ahead and blew it up a little bit bigger just to kind of give you an example. We are interested in Lot 6 of Block 43, shown on the blown-up portion of the plat there, along with the survey that was provided by the applicant for the case. It's important to note that the original lots, as they were platted in 1912, were 50 feet wide each, and the road right-ofways that intersected those lots were also 50 feet wide each. And as you can see, probably not too clear on there, it's much more clear in your packet that the actual measured width in the survey was 74.65 feet, and we're going to get to how we got to that number in just one second. The way this happened was, it's a lot of record. It's Lot 43, I'm sorry, it's Lot 6 of Block 43. It was 50 feet wide as originally platted. In 1981, a portion of the road, Crockett Street, was vacated along that lot. So if I go back here and I find Lot 43, I see Lot 6, and I see that the Crockett Street intersection right there, that portion of Crockett Street was vacated. And is there a way to do a pointer on this, Audrey, so I can?
No clue.
No clue? Very top?
Yeah.
So this is the lot in question right there, Lot 6. This is the road right-ofway that was vacated in 1981 as part of a Lee County resolution. And the way that happened was a portion, 25 feet of that 50-foot right-ofway, was given to Lot 6, which is the lot in question. The other portion was given to Lot 1 of Block 53, which is the adjacent block just down. So with that math, a 50-foot wide lot plus a 25-foot portion of a vacated right-ofway should give you 75 feet in width. And that was the assumption that was given to the applicant when they purchased the property. Upon getting a survey, the actual on-the-street measurement was 74.65, which is just short of the required lot width requirement. These discrepancies have been known to occur, not in high volumes, but they have been known to occur in older plats. There tends to be a little bit of a discrepancy between what's there on paper and what's actually there when you go out to the field. So this is an example of one of those instances. In terms of the surrounding area, the zoning and the underlying land use is compatible. Again, to the north, you have TFC2 zone property, which is the same zoning designation as the subject property. This is the type of zoning that allows for single-family or duplex structures by right, provided that the lot width requirements and depth are adhered to. To the east, you have residential single-family zoning designations. To the south, you have TFC2 zoning designations. And to the west is actually the boundary of the old 41 overlay. More specifically, it is SubArea 5, which is the area that allows townhouses within the old 41 overlay. Again, one of the purposes of that being to sort of increase the density anyway, so there seems to be that multifamily component right then and there regardless. So it does have a compatibility as far as staff can see. This is a quick rendering that was provided by the applicant of the type of duplex structure that they're looking to build. There was a rendering provided in the packet. I asked for something with a little bit more detail, and they were nice enough to provide me with this, just to kind of give you an example of the type of structure that they are looking to construct should we go ahead with this variance. So the way we recognized the hardship was that it was not self-created by the applicant. On paper, they had 75 feet per the 50-foot wide lot of record, plus the portion of the right-ofway that was vacated and given to Lot 6 should have been 75 feet. When the actual measurement was taken, it was a little short, so the hardship is not self-created or self-imposed as far as staff can tell. And there is compatibility with the surrounding area. There are several duplex structures that existed within the 375-foot public notification zone. I personally went out there and viewed the notification zone and can attest to the accuracy of that. And then the fact that they are right across from the old 41 overlay, which has the townhouse multifamily style of pervaded land use regardless, we didn't see any type of compatibility issues with this request. And with that, if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a couple of comments.
Yes.
I understand your presentation, and I recognize that a survey is required, and of course, the survey exposed the discrepancy in the plotting, which is very standard, I understand. We're four inches short of the required distance. The city staff is recommending approval of this. I want to be careful that a precedent is not being set in this case that we waive zoning requirements. In my opinion, you're waiving zoning requirements. It's not 75 feet. I'm not opposed to this particular case because it's only four inches. But typically, when something is waived, in my opinion, a quid pro quo of some sort should be presented by the applicant or asked for by the city to counterbalance what the city is giving the applicant without, just because. And there should be a reason for them doing that, and a quid pro quo of some sort. Adjustment of an impact fee, for example, might be a reasonable thing just to satisfy that the city didn't give up something for nothing. And I want to make sure that you understand, as a staff member, that waiving requirements of city rules without reason is, it needs to be very carefully done.
If I may, the Zoning Board of Adjustments, and your name is, the full name is Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, is to make adjustments, and that's a police power. It is not a contractual or negotiating power. It is something that you make the adjustments if they meet the terms of the variance. And in this case, Mr. Fegan reviewed the file to see that it met that. To do otherwise would be an illegal exaction not permitted by law.
Okay. That's what's, I'm just telling you my feelings.
Asking him to ma-- and that's why I wanted to do some refresher. I was not planning on talking on that. That's part of the subject. But asking a planner to add, now, he did add conditions that he thought was appropriate. If he thought that it was appropriate to add conditions such as the building must be yellow, or whatever condition, but asking to take additional revenue, now, of course, they do have to pay their impact fees. They do have to pay everything, building fees, that they are required to meet all the requirements of law, but it's not something that is relevant to this case, nor should it ever be relevant to require conditions to make payments except as permitted in our ordinances as police power.
Okay, so you're telling me that the zoning requirement of 75 feet is not a requirement?
No, I'm telling you that ever since every city has ever been here, we have had abilities to grant variances when things meet the variance requirement. In this case, the variance requirement is based on, I believe, a 1923 or?
1912.
1912 plat. He can't go back in time and fix that plat from 1912. So, I mean, it's been over 100 years. So at this time, the only thing he can do to make the correction is to obtain a variance.
Okay, I would suggest that--
That's why every code has a variance-type procedure to provide relief where it would otherwise be unjust.
Mrs. Vance, I understand that. So would it be appropriate for the city to revise the ordinance to say that the platted dimension, irrespective of what it ends up in year 2016, the platted dimension governs the zoning requirements? That's what you've told me.
I'm not sure exactly how you phrase this. I'm trying to understand exactly what you mean.
The plating distance of 75 feet is what's controlling the applicant's application, not the actual survey. So if you would change the zoning ordinance to say that it is the plating intention as opposed to the actual survey, that would uncomplicate the problem for me.
And that is another way to do it. It does say, if you look at the conditions of granting a variance, the last condition of granting a variance is if there is something where it is not of general recurrent, if it is something that is of general or recurrent nature. If this happened time and time again, we discovered a survey issue, then the appropriate thing would be to change the ordinance. It's not a requirement when it happens infrequently, as is this case. I don't know when this has ever happened previously at this location. So you do that, you do change the ordinance from time to time. If you find that you keep making the same issue happen, that people need to be granted a variance, in this case, it is infrequent of nature, and that's where a variance is appropriate, to go through this type of action.
But the survey distance and the platted distance on 1912-platted subdivisions will almost always be inexact.
I agree, there's quite a bit of situation, and we do have relief in our Land Development Code for minor technical of, I believe, like 1-inch, 2-inch. We don't believe, once we're hitting the 6-inch range, to utilize that section.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that there is a discrepancy in waiving that in the future for different cases may not be appropriate. And I appreciate we can't negotiate it.
Right, yes. Staff has the administrative ability if it's a small amount, but this was too big for that amount.
If I may, for the record, Jacqueline Gensen, I'm having some consternation with the zoning board using this as a waiver process. This is not a waiver process. This is a variance process that is outlined in your Land Development Code that is available to property owners should they not meet certain standards in our Land Development Code. It is a process where we afford due process to evaluate requests. So this is a process that's in our Land Development Code. It's not a waiver process. So the applicant has to meet specific criteria in order for staff to formulate a recommendation if they're eligible for a variance. This is a variance process in your Land Development Code. It's not a waiver.
And do you understand the difference there?
Well, I understand the legal difference as just explained, but it's, in my head, it's a waiver of the requirement. But that's a personal, my own personal definition. We've said enough, let's move on.
Okay.
Any further comments from Mike from the board? Could we hear from the applicant?
Yes, I have one correction that's on here is on the application here. They've got it as 0.6 inches or 0.6 feet. It's actually 0.35, which is 4 inches, equivalent to 4 inches. When this was plotted in 1912, it was plotted, the whole block is 3 feet off on the entire block. So what's been plotted there, they had to make up the distance on all the lots on that block. I believe there are six lots to the block, so each one had to give up so many inches to make up that 3 feet.
So you're asking for 4 inches, is that what you're?
Correct, 4 inches.
And what I would suggest is not changing it to 4 inches, but just allow up to a 6-inch and that, or up to a 6-foot deviation--
6-inch.
--or variance. Up to a 6-inch variance, and that way, if there is some minor, we don't need to come back to here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we welcome any comments from the audience, any visitors? There being none? Do we have a motion from the board to accept the application?
I'd like to move approval.
And to be specific, up to a 6-inch variance, as suggested by Ms. Vance?
Yeah, 6 inches or 0.35 feet, however you want to do it. 6 inches is appropriate.
I'll second the motion up to allow a 6-inch variance.
It's moved and seconded. Could you, Audrey, could you read it back to us before we vote?
The deviation would be from Section 4-489 of the Land Development Code to allow up to a 0.6 foot, which is, comes to 74.65 feet when you measure it vertically, a reduction from the 75-minute lot width requirement for construction of a duplex structure located at 276-99 Dorch Avenue.
Thank you. Can we read the roll, please?
Pete Pastore.
Am you in favor of the motion?
Okay. Vice Chairman Donnelly.
Yes.
James Worster.
Yes.
Stephen Kissinger.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved.
Thank you. Before we go on to the next thing, I would request that I give you a slight refresher. I know some of you have heard it more recently than others. Janet, I don't need you for this, so we can excuse the court reporter, but I do want it still to be aired as part of your meeting. Michael, would you be kind enough to pass these out? And we'll make sure we get the other ones to other members of the zoning boards that are not here today. Happy New Year's, first of all. It is a new year.
I can't speak.
You guys can go, you're fine. If you want to sit and listen, you're welcome to. I'll take that, please, and I'll give it over to the city clerk.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, board.
It's a new year, and I just, because we've had some cases come forward, we also have some more complicated stuff coming forward in the near future, I kind of wanted to give a little refresher on zoning. And how to weigh evidence is the most important part of this. First of all, you have a very unique role from any other volunteer board. You're our only board who serves in a quasi-judicial capacity, okay? Quasi-judicial doesn't mean your judges, I don't need to order you a bunch of black robes, but what it does mean is that the nature of your hearing is more formal than other hearings or other meetings. Normally, groups have meetings, it's a more relaxed, yours is a very set-forth process. And the way we work it, and some cities do it differently, we have a two-tier system where the zoning board is the case where everybody gets the evidence. This is the record. So this is the most important part because everything that comes before you becomes part of the record. Now, and so new evidence is not generally allowed at the later hearings. So I'll give an example. We have a hearing that people are interested in. They will not, if they did not come to the zoning hearing, they will not be able to participate in the zoning portion of that hearing. Now, there's kind of a couple of rules. Yes, Jim?
Can I ask a question? You're saying the record becomes official.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and I understand that. The tape of the meeting, which is publicly available, if it, and this gets into the next issue they want to talk about that you're well aware of, which governs, the minutes of the meeting or the official videotape if there's a question between the two?
Great question, because my answer is neither. The one that will govern will be the court reporter. So there will come times, and let me give you an example. I've had situations where zoning board recommended approval, staff recommended approval, got to the city council, they recommended denial. And I'm going, where's my evidence? I need to have something. And the reason I have Janet or any other court reporter sit there is so that if I need a record, I can have it. You cannot give a judge the minutes, or, I mean, the minutes can count a little bit, but the tape recording, judges will not listen. You have to have things transcribed so that they can actually find, point, you know, and see the evidence. That's why we take the sworn testimony, that's why the evidence, why we have a court reporter, so we're able to create the record or a portion of the record. Sometimes, it's very costly, by the way, to print out pages, but when we do, we print out usually either a portion of the transcript, or if we're in something where I need to defend the whole transcript. But anyway, that's, I was going to get into that question later, but I'm glad you brought it up. The general rule, and this is, is that, and the reason I want this is so I can defend anything city council does. One of the problems I have, I do not represent staff. You may think I represent them, I kind of baby them a little bit sometimes, you know, proud of Mike, because I've worked for him for, you know, worked with him on stuff, so getting to voir dire him is a pleasure, you know, to get him to be his first time, you know, testifying, it's kind of neat. But my opinion is whatever city council tells me, my opinion is at the end of the day, okay? So I am trying to be neutral. Now, what that means is many times you have people come up, they will say things, they may say things that they are not, that's not appropriate for them to say. Now, am I going to say to a citizen, you can't say that because that is only within the governance of an expert? No, because I'll get my tushy kicked, I mean, by any citizen up there. So lots of things go in. Now, so to preserve the record, what I want to do is make sure, if it's not a DRI, and DRIs are a little exception, so let's go on the basic rule. The basic rule is, did we provide procedural due process? Did we actually grant them a hearing? Was the hearing something that they could attend? We didn't have secret hearings. We, you know-- We, you know, there was some way where they could actually, yeah, let John sit here, where they could actually be here and testify. And then the other question is whether city council departed from essential requirements of law. And that's usually our land development code. Did we do something where we weren't following our land development code, or where we weren't following statutes? There are some statutes that relate to zoning also. And then the third part is, and so if we meet those first two parts, then the third part is, was the decision based on the record? Is it supported by competent and substantial evidence? So if those three elements are met, courts are not allowed to reweigh the evidence. So whatever city council decides, that's it. And that's how I like things to be. Now, the DRI I mentioned was an exception. They have what's called a de novo review. So if we do something on a DRI, your last case was, not the last variance, but the last case before that was, Pelican Landing is a DRI, Benita Bay is a DRI, Parklands, we have several, Mediter, no, Meditera's not Parklands, we have several DRIs in our jurisdiction. They have a different option. They can do the same option I mentioned, the 1633215, and I didn't cite statutes there in consistency with the comp plan, but they also can go under another section in Florida statute, chapter 380, and that's a de novo. And what that means is we have to go back to ground zero and have a whole new hearing. It's done before, not before you guys, it's taken away from us. It goes to a DOA hearing officer, Division of Administrative Hearings. That hearing officer will hear the evidence, and then whatever the recommended opinion will be reviewed by the governor and cabinet. I have been involved in one of them. It cost me about a quarter million dollars. You know, it's not cheap. I'm not happy when we go into that situation. If I'm not happy, the DRI involved is also not happy, because it's also expensive on their part, too. But that is another method going forward. So I just wanted to point out, zoning board cannot ignore, invalidate, or declare enforceable any land development code provision. So last week, or last time, last month, I gave you a resolution. The resolution was adopted by city council. The resolution was a comp plan annotation. Steve, I know you weren't here, but please listen anyway. And I felt that when the record, at the end of the day, when the record was presented, what was said by Mr. Insirpi in the motion, and I know you have other things in the minutes, it ignored the fact that, under our comp plan, that resolution has the same authority as law. I mentioned that to the zoning board. I don't say it out of fun to say it, especially when I have a bunch of people ready to kill me when I'm mentioning those type of things. So in that regard, you can't disregard things that are part of the record. Now, I do not testify. I have pleasure, I listen to the professionals do so. When I talk, I am talking as an officer of the court. That means I'm not allowed to lie. I'm just telling you exactly how I see things. And as I told you, I don't have an opinion until city council tells me what my opinion is at the end of the time. Before we get into evidence, ex parte communication. It happens probably more often with city council, but I have no doubt that sometimes people, if you go to Publix, will, you know, talk to you about a zoning case or something if they find it interesting. There was a case that came out many years ago that, and it was actually like a variance or a special exception at a gas station. It was a little case called Jennings out of Miami. And what the courts held in that case was because the decision maker, and I think at that time it was the zoning board, it didn't go, zoning had final action for the zoning board, one of the guys had gone to the place, he did not disclose it on the record, so they disqualified that decision. They turned it over, and then they adopted some statutes. And governments have two ways to go. We either have it where thou shalt not talk to anybody on the zoning board, anybody on city council on any zoning matters, and that's how Lee County does it. Or alternatively, we allow the presumption of prejudice to go away if you disclose it on the record timely enough so the person hearing it has the ability to either ask you questions, inquire, to determine whether or not you're a fair decision maker. Overturning is not a good thing, so we do, and there's other penalties. I mean, losing this job is probably not the worst thing in the world for you guys, but, you know, for others, it could be a much worse situation. But always promptly disclose any ex parte. Now, ex parte could be a communication with a person. It can be the citizen, it could be the developer, but it could also be a citizen. You know, somebody coming up and talking to you about a case, that would be an ex parte communication. A site visit, if you're going to go check it out before the hearing, that's an ex parte. That needs to be disclosed on the record. Now, I don't know if anybody here drove on Dorch Avenue to check it out. Okay, didn't seem interesting enough to anybody. But sometimes zoning board check it out, you know, check out. So it's very important, even if you don't have the paper information, to at least disclose it on the record. So it's very clear there. Evidence, this is the biggie. And this is probably the most contested type issue, because we expect you to weigh credibility of the witnesses. But there's evidence that you're allowed to allow and evidence that you're not. Now, I'm not going to go up there and tell somebody that, you know, you cannot testify on something. Now, I mean, that's, citizens will give you opinions, and they'll give you lots of opinions. And nothing wrong with that. You know, people have a right to their opinions, except the court does not listen to their opinions in the same manner. And that's why I felt it was important that we have this talk today. So into evidence, again, I need to have the reasons, and I see Mr. Worster wrote up 40 concerns that he found from the hearing. He went back and probably listened to the tape. I'm sure you watched it a couple of times to get that many, because you had, I mean, that's a lot of work to be able to do it. And incidentally, that's what we do when we prepare trans, you know, we get the transcript, and we figure out what page people said things that does constitute evidence. But let's talk about what does not constitute evidence, because I think that is the hardest part for you guys. And it's hard for anybody. Don't take this personal, you know. I think anybody, you know, who can follow it completely and divorce from any emotional, especially when you have people who do, who have advocacy skills, they are very emotional on some of the points, it's very persuasive. But just because it's persuasive doesn't mean it's valid evidence. And that would be vocal opposition of residents. That's a good example of one. It's more, that's considered by the courts as subjective polling, you know. I've always get the question, it hasn't happened recently, how about if we all sign a petition that we're against this? That's not evidence. It just says that nobody wants the same thing that they already got, you know, so you can't use that. Information obtained through ex parte communication, that is not evidence. Now, it certainly is persuasive, you get it, but there's ways to get it on the record. If you said, I drove by the site, Mr. Planner, please tell me why this is this, or this is that, then I think that falls within the proper evidence. Personal reasons as to the character. Sometimes people don't like a particular developer. I had a person from the LPA wanting me to change an ordinance that we're coming up, because it uses the word "the developer shell." She wanted to use a different word than developer, because she didn't want it to seem as though we were giving something to a developer. This is a bonus density issue. I did not make that change. You know, some people are developers, you know, there, people may have an image of them, but that's not appropriate necessarily. It's not a personal character. You know, you don't do something because somebody's a nice guy. One of my zoning board members early on said, because the people hired a particular consultant, you know, let's not listen to staff and let's go with that consultant, because we like that consultant. I thought I was going to get nauseous. But, you know, those are things you're not allowed to. Economic concerns is a no-no. And there's a case called Isla Marada Spice, and in that case, they didn't want big drugstores, but they wanted other retails. You know, that's something that, it's considered economic protection. There's another Key West case, I guess the Keys get a lot of it, where they tried to protect the conch train, but they didn't allow the rubber, the amphibious vehicles. And I think they ended up settling for about seven or nine million dollars. You know, so we don't want to get involved where we are making a personal decision, not based on the compatibility, but based on an economic concern. And then any other desires, and this one comes up sometimes, it has not recently, yes, it has recently. And that is, people deciding that they want to tell you the other use for the property that's a better use. I want that property to be used for a city park. I want the city to acquire it, so don't give people zoning. So that's evidence that's not allowable. Now, what is allowable? The documents you get in the staff report. The reason staff provide all that is we add that to the record, so that we're able to support the decision based on evidence that we have forward. So staff report, traffic studies, landscape designs, vegetable, a vegetable, vegetative or animal surveys, John probably can think of another 200, archaeological reports, there's a ton of different things that staff looks at as we go through this. Expert testimony. Now, who is an expert? Generally, the applicant will bring theirs in. Staff is an expert. And the reason I go through that voir dire and I tender them, I know I say it very fast, because it's not very sexy or exciting, you know, all the prerequisites of a hearing, but the reason I do that at every hearing is just in case it has to go to court, I'm going to be saying, you know, our professional staff, whether it's Mr. Dolmire or today, Mr. Fegan, they're the ones who were sworn in to provide or constitute that evidence. And citizen testimony, that is fact-based. Fact-based is definitely eligible for evidence, but a citizen can't render expert testimony. Now, some citizens can, and that is where the citizen may have additional knowledge. And in that case, what I want to do is I want to do a short voir dire and have them accepted. If you recall, a couple of years ago, Lori Clodier asked to be tendered as an expert in water sample specimen collection, and we did so. And actually, that's what the basis of a decision, upholding a council decision, was not based on what staff said, because the opinion, what council did was contrary to staff or anybody else, but she was the sole person there, and because she was tendered as an expert in a field on the record, you know, now, there might be a credibility issue, but on the record, she was an expert, and so that was allowed to be taken. You do need to weigh the credibility of evidence, and that's tough. I'm not saying that's an easy job. Okay? But lay witnesses, and that's usually citizens, they can offer their views about anything not requiring expert testimony, but the courts have determined that certain things do require expert testimony, and that include traffic problems, light, noise pollution, and general unfavorable impacts of proposed land development. That you need to have expert testimony. And that's why the planners talk about compatibility. I could not tell you whether something is compatible or not to save my life. That is not in my scope, that's, lawyers are probably the worst to do that. We all feel that we can do it, but we know we can't. I also, in this refresher, so are you guys following me? Okay. This is tough stuff. You know, I'm not, when you have some people up there, and they're very persuasive, I get it, I understand, but it doesn't mean that that constitutes the evidence that you follow. Now, you can always tell them they have to stick to what they know, but you're probably just going to make them angry. You know, so I probably let them talk, you know, just like I don't interrupt the applicant when they're doing their case, I try not to interrupt anybody when they're doing their case. I hope I don't. Yeah, sometimes, yeah. He'll tell me when I do it. It's something that we need to make sure that you're making your basis or your decisions based on the record. And I acknowledge you have a tough job. You have the toughest job, I think, of any volunteer board. Actually, even sometimes tougher than city council, because you're the ones who are making sure the record is the record. Zoning board cases, first of all, before we ever get to, like today, Mike had probably worked on that variance for at least a month or two, minimum. There are, what's, that's a simple variance. You know, it doesn't magically, there's not a zoning fairy who comes up and pops out a case. These folks work on these cases sometimes for a year or long, some of the complicated ones that you had recently, Jackie worked on it for over a year, and I know you worked on it, too. Yeah, but, you know, I mean, they have parameters, they have to get it done within certain timeframes, they have to meet certain requirements, because again, we have to meet that due process requirement. We can't just delay a case forever also. They do so to analyze and then also to form their professional opinion. You know, whether to approve or deny, that's tough on staff. They have to think, you know, what do they want to do? Now, there will be conditions in every case, except for conventional zoning requests. And the conventional zoning request is if you get an RM2 or an RS1, you don't see them that often, because usually somebody needs a deviation, but there will usually be conditions. And staff works very hard with the applicants to try to make sure all the conditions. Now, we have tried to work with applicants also, so when you get the documents, because sometimes we're not, we're going to have to agree to disagree. I mean, I wish I could say we always work out perfectly, but that doesn't happen. We ask the applicants to provide them, provide us with their conditions or conditional changes so that we can bring it before the record, before the zoning board. Sometimes we're not able to get it worked out, but those are things that we try to do ahead of time. Now, I'll give another example of another case recently, and this go back a couple months, or the summer. We had one case that had an access issue, and at the end of the day, you guys overturned the staff decision, but you left a critical thing on the table as to how much should the access be, whether you agreed with the applicant or agreed with staff. You said you guys have to work it out. Well, it was not able to be worked out, and it is still a point of contention between us and the applicant, between the city and the applicant. And it's probably going to court right now. I mean, it will probably go to court in the next couple of months, there'll be something filed. So as a result of things like that, you can't, if staff say, we have an issue, we need you to actually decide. Now, if you can't decide that minute, that's fine. Continue a case. There's nothing wrong in saying, we need a little bit, you know, timeout, we need for you to figure this out, you guys come back to us in a month, two months, because then it puts some pressure onto an applicant to negotiate. If you say, work it out, well, the applicant, if they haven't worked it out yet, they're not going to work it out with us. I can tell you this now, you know, or...
It makes it to this point.
Yeah, if it, you know, so we need you to either make a decision, or we need you to continue it, to make a decision to at least help motivate either side, but, you know, do the motivation.
Let me ask a question. You're saying we, as a board, can ask for the case to be continued because of what appears to be a discrepancy in staff and applicants?
If you think the continuance can get additional information to resolve a problem, absolutely.
Okay, and...
You can continue to keep the record open, you could limit the record, you can do it two ways. You can either continue, so anything can be heard at the next time, or you continue it for just a specific portion.
But that generally goes to one of the requirements that's in the process. So you wouldn't be looking to something that was not relevant to the application, but let's just say it was an access issue that was part of the required middle, and you did not feel that what you were receiving was as thorough as you would like to see. That would be an issue that it could be continued, or you could continue a case.
Okay, and I assume you'll tell us, if, let's say, somebody makes a motion to continue, the reasoning has to come forward, and you will decide if that's valid.
I'll ask questions. Right. I will ask, the questions I will ask is, do you want to continue it to keep the case open so there's new participants, or do you want to continue it just for this limited information? Preferably for the limited information, so that we don't have to worry about a whole new case?
And really, a continuance should be kind of a last resort. It should be a situation that you have, you as well as everybody involved, tried to get to the point, but for some reason or another, the information wasn't available, or the information would be available at a later date. Continuing for the sake of continuing and push an issue down the road is not generally a good option. A good option is to continue a case because you know that there will be a situation where you can evaluate additional information later.
Or if you are confused by the presentations that...
And that's fine, too. You could take time to think about stuff before you actually deliberate and render a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I want to tell you, this is always a question, because some cities... Now, I, I want to tell you, uh, this is always a question because some cities use hearing examiners, or county uses hearing examiner, Cape Coral's now going to hearing examiners for quite a few things. I have been an advocate for a zoning board, and the reason I like you guys is you deliberate on the record, and then I usually have more of a basis for defending a case. So, when you have a hearing examiner, and usually it's a lawyer, they write their opinion, but their opinion is one person, and no matter how smart that one person is, it's never the same as if I have seven of you guys or four of you guys up there deliberating because they, you, you do look at issues, and sometimes you look at issues, there's a thing called the tipsy coachman, I'll explain that in a second. Sometimes you guys have issues that is incorrect, it's invalid, you know, that's okay. And that, under Florida law, that's called tipsy coachman. The tipsy coachman doc- is a doctrine in appellate law, and what it means is, um, the drunk coachman, but he still was able to get to the right place, okay? It, it, it's from 17th century. I'm sorry, it's a weird lit- you know, uh, none of us have coachmen anymore, imagine the horse, but the, you know, the horse, everything still made it to the correct place. So, even though there was one or two incorrect things in the record, it doesn't matter because you got the basics that... Now, there are some cases that are coming out on clearly erroneous that are scaring me, so, you know, that, that was another thing prob- not everything I'm doing because of you guys, I'm also doing because of changes in the Florida law on, uh, some of the things here. So, there are things to protect the situation, so don't worry if you say something and it's incorrect because ultimately, you know, if the record's going in the right place, the courts find that it's going in the right place. So, I like when you guys talk, you know, even asking me to repeat the motion was excellent so that you had an idea of what you're doing, it's very clear, um, at the end of the day, and if there's one or two things incorrect, that's fine, that, don't, don't try to make a perfect thing. Yes, Richard?
Audrey, going back to the example that we were talking about, uh, that you brought up, I, I think it was the case where there was a, a traffic signal issue, and...
No.
No?
It wasn't that case. I was thinking of the car wash.
Yeah.
Oh, the car wash.
It was, it was, go ahead, I think you, you're gonna have a specific question.
But that's another one.
But, yeah, there, there was a question, who's going to pay for the...
Right.
For the traffic signal?
Right.
But, so that was an open-ended deal.
Well, that's true, and there's also, just to provide an alternative, when situations come up that maybe you know which direction you want to go, but you don't have all the facts, you can simply state that at a later decision, certain information will be provided and evaluated, and you can make decisions that way. It's, if, if, at the zoning level, there's certain information that's known and that's required, and I know that we've gone on for, for quite a, quite a bit, past couple of months in terms of the level of detail that's provided. And the reason why we provide you the level of detail that we do is because that's the information that we have to the level that we feel comfortable with. We could require additional information in terms of traffic or in terms of, of other conditions that, that would need to be decided before construction starts, but when a plan development comes in with a list of maybe 10 uses, those uses don't generate the same type of traffic. We want to evaluate and, and approve uses that are appropriate, but at the same time, an office is not going to generate the same type of traffic as, as a veterinary clinic. So, when that decision is made as to what use they will actually construct, what use will go in there, we do require additional information to be submitted in terms of traffic or in terms of environmental conditions, a- and unfortunately, those decisions maybe are further down the line, and I know that there's concern that you would like to see all of that information here, but if we were to provide that information to you now, you would basically require an applicant to, to declare specifically what type of uses where and to what square footage, which to a certain extent is not appropriate at this level. It's something that's very nice to have, and it's something that's required before somebody goes into a particular space, but it's not something that we can require at this point. If they have a situation where they can narrow, narrow down uses or square footage to the point where that type of information can be provided, we do provide it to you. But if you've got a use that, or an application that has about 10 or 12 uses, that information becomes a little more difficult at that specificity.
And, and let me go through that a little bit different way, um, to explain it. When the expert testifies, hopefully, they have done what's called modeling, and the modeling does cost money, you know, they have to run different models and different reports for different scenarios. And so, having an applicant run 20 models, um, is not appropriate. However, as John pointed out, if the applicant's only asking for one or two uses, or a worst-case scenario, it is appropriate to get a model for that, that use. Uh, what we don't want to do is cause a zoning application to cost, uh, to be cost-disproportionate, to, to be cost-prohibitive, you know, that is not, you know, we're trying to balance the need for what you need to make the decision along with the need for what the applicant, you know, the applicant's pocketbook, because later on, when they go to development order stage, and that's the actual, be pre-building, the...
Engineering.
Infrastructure, the engineering, that's when staff will start reviewing, uh, those traffic models, uh, with greater specificity. And I'm using traffic as an example, but it could be flood, stormwater, it could be animal species. Uh, we take, um, for example, trees, we'll have to go to the tree, uh, tree advisory board, so there's a lot of different steps that occur that's outside of the dominion of the zoning board, and, and I think it's human nature to think that, um, everything should be known. I know that when I hear citizens up here, I know how they feel, you know, everything should be known ahead of time. And sometimes it is known ahead of time, we have the data and the analysis, and sometimes it's not, because at that point, it would be, uh, silly almost to go through that. Now, you do require a worst-case scenario, like the highest use that they're asking for, you know...
To, yes, and most of the time when we hear questions that come up and questions that come from the board, it's not that they're issues we don't want to examine, they just may be issues that we examine later. Ms. Richer, I know you're about ready to, to comment on this.
Yeah, I want to ask a question about this. In recent cases, developers have come in with, um, applications that involve residential units.
Mm-hmm.
And as we talk about, or as they talk about it, we, they can't say how many units are going to go in, or specifically how many, um, efficiency apartments or units, how many, uh, single-family dou- uh, uh, sing- one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. And each of those has different parking requirements by the code. So, if we're looking at a plan where the guy wants, or person, applicant wants X units, does not define what the units are going to be, how can you determine what the parking requirements are going to be?
Well, that goes up to what, what Audrey was talking about before, because...
Right.
This, the decision of this board and the final decision of the council is not the last review a project receives. The next review generally tends to be a development order, which is basically all of the site work that goes from the property line up to the building wall, and that includes everything from parking to landscaping to drainage, and at that time, they do have to declare exactly how many, uh, one-bedroom, two-bedroom type of units, so you can do the parking calculation. Um, so, so it is something that unless they're requesting a different standard, the standard in the land development code will apply, and this board should feel comfortable that whatever is proposed for construction, they will have adequate parking because they have to demonstrate that at the time of development order. And then that's verified at the time of, of building permits.
Yeah, I, I understand that, so it had, it's not going to be done at this hearing, may, may not be done at this hearing.
There are times that it is, and there are times that it is not, that, but if there is not a request to deviate from the land development code standard, those standards will continue to apply, and it's not, even though there is not a specific, uh, parking standard established here, they will have to demonstrate adequate parking exists at the time of development order.
Okay, let me go...
You don't waive, you don't waive the requirement, it's just reviewed later.
Just to get in a little bit of detail, the one on Dean Street that came in a couple of months ago, they used the on-street parking that it was shown on the plan as a part of their parking requirements. They, they counted those spaces, where it's very clear in the ordinance that I read, unless I, I missed something, and that's very possible, that on-street parking can't be used for the required parking. Now, you could not make a case because you did, I, it did not show how many spaces, excuse me, the, the breakdown of the units, which would dictate the number of spaces required. So, is on-street parking allowed, uh, just to go back to that case for a second?
In downtown, it, it can be. They would never reserve spaces, meaning that if you were to drive down Dean Street after the construction of those parking spaces, it would not say revert, reserved for unit 207.
Right.
But if they wanted to build those spaces a- and, and include those as part of their required, they would be able to. Now, in this particular case, the reason why they said that they were required was because they used a standard for the rest of the city and not apply the downtown standard. So, according to, to the actual requirement for their section of the city, for those type of units, those spaces would not be necessary, or at least required by staff. They require them because of a different standard and because of a different way that they wanted to operate.
Yeah, we recognize there are different case, each case, it has its own peculiarities, and I appreciate that it all comes out in the permitting process.
Yes, sir, and, and so, I, I just wanted you to feel comfortable that while a lot of your questions that came up did not have direct answers at the hearing, they are not items that, that are brushed aside, and they're not items that, that are not evaluated, they're just evaluated at a later date.
Right, and, and I need to point that out, there are things that we, that should not be part of the zoning record, so, things like impact fees. Um, sometimes a developer likes to mention it because he likes to say, "Hey, I'm paying this amount," but quite frankly, it is what it is. At the end of the day, they pay the impact fees pursuant to the ordinance. Uh, we do not have, there is some deviations from it, uh, if it's existing prior stuff, I mean, but, but it, that's, again, that's not something that we go before this group. Uh, development order issues, uh, they spend months and months and months on some development orders.
And that kind of goes into, to the level of review at certain indications, because if, unless the developer has zoning approval, the cost of preparing a development order is rather expensive, and they don't generally want to spend that money until they know that this board and the city council has authorized their development. Certain things need to be done so that they can show you that an adequate capacity exists or an adequate facility exists. But by and large, most of those specific items are addressed when the engineering is prepared, and those documents have, then have to match the zoning documents that you have approved. That's an administrative process, so I know that there's a lack of satisfaction in, in seeing those plans prior to approval, uh, but be assured that just because something is not presented as part of the zoning record, it is still evaluated prior to construction.
Now, John is able to make administrative changes after you, you guys have done something, but it's only, has to be internal to the development, it cannot hit environmental, cannot hit transportation. He has a very limited discretion, so sometimes you see a case come back up because the developer realized they needed to make a change that was outside of his ability.
Can you give me an example of an administrative change you would make?
I can make a change, or community development can make a change that does not increase traffic, does not increase intensity or density, meaning I can't add square footage or add a number of units over what was approved. Um, I cannot reduce perimeter buffering, and...
Has to be internal to the development?
Yes, excuse me, has to be internal to the development. So, there's been situations where people want to move units around or alter a design internally, and we've been able to do that, but anything that would impact any of those four areas needs to come back either to you, or, but eventually, city council for, for an amendment.
Great, thank you.
Now, and then plating ta- a plating can take a while off, and that's where the surveyor actually puts where the buildings are going to physically be. So, you don't want them doing that here, you want them doing that closer to the end game. And, um, the other thing that comes up, and this happens, um, more at city council than with you guys, but sometimes I'll have people ask for conditions right at the bench. I had a council member, God love her, used to do it almost every time, and that's the area that I get the most neurotic and nervous, because my biggest fear is that in the good intention, they're adding a condition, it negates what we already have in the code, and so they have to go to a lesser standard than we have in the code. So, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, with lighting, we have very strict lighting, we, we, you know, we're a dark skies community, so if you say, "Well, they're allowed to have X," you know, and it's something you guys think that it, that'll make it dark enough, and it actually doesn't, then I'm kind of SOL, or staff is SOL, because we have an edict in the zoning ordinance that gives them a lesser standard than what we have on the books.
Well, I think the theme here is, we don't have problems answering your questions. If you have a question as to, "We'd like to do this," or "We would like to achieve something," that's our job, to help you get to that point. So, if you say, "We would like to make sure that there is a dark skies component to this," or "Parking is met," or whatever, whatever your concern happens to be for an application, we're more than willing to come up to the podium and tell you what we think, or what we think would accomplish that goal, and then you are free to agree or disagree. Uh, but it is our job to provide you our review of an application and our recommendation based upon that review, and that review's going to generally have conditions, or at least, um, backup that's associated with that. And at that point, if, if there's something that wasn't clear, or if there's something that wasn't, uh, included, feel free to ask us questions, that's why we show up to these meetings.
Let, let me ask one, a quick question. We get the packet roughly a week ahead of time?
Yes, sir.
Depending on time, we review it, uh, in that, this period. Let's say we have a question. I, I've assumed it is not appropriate for us to ask staff questions about what's been presented, is that true?
You can if you file an ex parte.
Got it.
In fact, if you have, if there are questions as to review of the application, I would prefer that, you know, as staff, would prefer that you do call. Uh, I don't have any problems making myself available or anybody else in the staff available to, to answer those. You do have to disclose that fact that you've talked to us, but I've found that just talking through some of these things helps you or council members form an opinion, or at least figure out which direction you want to go in, in the hearing, and I've never had any problems discussing these cases.
And sometimes you find typos, or you find mistakes, so we actually appreciate it, too. So, I mean, there are things, having, like I said, I like the zoning board because I have more thoughts, more brains, I have more eyes when I have you guys, as opposed to having a hearing examiner. I mean, I really think zoning boards are superior to a hearing examiner process as long as they are actually weighing the evidence correctly. Now, do I think, when you have a room of the pitchforks and torches, that you're going to weigh it, you know, you're human, and, and we expect that also, you know, but I, I try to follow the evidence as much as you can, uh, because statute requires us to give reasons for denial, and I have your sheet that you have for the minutes, and it's very nice, and, you know, I appreciate your, your work on it, but at the same time, a lot of it, I would have to, you know, but, now, not all of it, but some of it, I would have to say, you know, those concerns is not based on substantial competent evidence as defined by the court system, you know, and that's where laypeople give testimony outside their approach. Do I have an opinion on traffic? I sure do. Do I have an opinion on different issues? Of course I do. I'm human, you know, and I expect you guys to be human, too, but I do need you also to follow the law for zoning. And, did this help at all, or, yeah?
And if you have questions that come up...
Maybe once a year, go through this?
Call us. I don't, like I said before, I don't have any problems answering questions, and, and the purpose is not so much to take away from the debate here, but so that we can focus the debate here. I enjoy when there's discussion as to what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. My only frustration comes in the fact that we start going down courses that I really can't address, uh, or you are not able to, to base your decision upon. So, uh, if there's something that comes up when you're reviewing these packets in that, in that week time that you have, call me. Call whoever it is that, that's preparing it, and we'll, we'll answer whatever we can.
And, and let me be careful, too. Govern- you know, we had a little bit of the conversation about the quid pro quo kind of moment, if variance, you should give a quid pro quo. You have to be careful because, again, I'm hitting Florida statutes, but there's also case law, you do not want our rules to be confiscatory. Uh, and in this situation, if we denied the variance, I probably would have said it would have been confiscatory if he, if he wasn't allowed to have his entitlements. Um, having an additional condition, there's a new statute that got adopted this year, went into effect October 1, and it basically says you have to follow, um, I have to say City of Tygard, it's bad, I have to shortcut, I, I see cases in front of me. You have to follow, uh, the established principles of law before you require a condition. So, what that means is you're not allowed to have something that disproportionately impacts a piece of property for the benefit of the public at large. You can have an incidental impact, but you cannot just take property, for lack of a better term, because that's how courts will see it as taking property, and again, that's by constitution compensable. So, my objective is not to provide compensable rights to others on the basis of our decision-making.
When you condition... When you condition, you better have a reason that you're conditioning.
Right, and, you know, and staff thinks about these conditions very carefully before, you know, and sometimes I go, why don't you add this, why don't you add that, and they're going, well, I don't see where I can because of X, Y, Z. I mean, I do it to them also. So, yeah, he's laughing because he's like, yes, she does. And, you know, again, I need to rely on their professional opinion, you know, their professional decision-making on this. I'm not involved, sometimes I am a little bit, but I try not to be involved in a lot of that, because it's not my place. Is it your place? Probably it's right to ask the questions, but, you know, again, understand the dynamics of all of this. So things like, say, the developer needs to give us a beach, or the developer needs to, I'll give another example, the developer needs to comply with the homeowners association documents. That's outside our realm, we don't care. It's not that, you know, but we get those, we get that all the time, because they, and the Pelican Landing Beach Park is a great example, where people wanted special, give me's, you know, give me private stuff. They wanted us to be like Robin Hood, they wanted us to get from them, you know, for the others. So it happens, that's why staff sometimes, if you see us getting a little reluctant, that's probably why.
May I ask a question?
Please. I can hear you.
I wanted to know, you know, we had this about the car wash on Benita Beach, where I'm 41. We allowed them to have, under the uses, it was added on after it came to us, which it wasn't there before, you allowed it, and then you said, well, we'll have to put in the use to be able to put it on that piece of property. And when they went to get the application, is that use already on the property, or did you add it when it came to us?
Well, no, and actually, that was a planned development, it was for one specific use, they want a planned development that only would have one use, they would get rid of like 90 other uses, I don't know, I'm making up the number there, but other uses that they had available to them, and that was their application. Based on due process, we have to bring the hearing to you regardless, you know, we might say this is horrible, or dumb, or whatever, we still have to bring the hearings forward.
Yeah, we don't, we don't tell people not to apply.
No, but I mean, it was added on when it came to us, and we said, we have to add this to the uses, that's, you know, the conditions, I didn't know what to happen.
I'm not following exactly, but in terms of what somebody asked for, it's either going to be part of the request that's included within their application, or it's going to be a condition that we're proposing that would go along with the use or the property.
Okay, well, my thinking was, before it came to us, this piece of property, they applied for the car wash. Then when it came to us, you said you have to add that condition where they can use the use, or the condition on the property was added to allow it. Was that proper, or, I'm just asking, was there before it came to us?
Um...
The condition to use on that property did not allow on the uses.
Oh, okay, I think I'm following. Currently, the car wash is not a permitted use within that zoning district, therefore they have applied for a planned development, so that use would be permitted. And so in terms of what you're requesting, or what you're asking is, they needed to apply for a planned development, so that use would be permitted, because currently it's not a permitted use on that property.
That's right, yeah, okay. So we added that on to the hour, right?
Well, that would...
What's an add-on?
It would have been a, what the request was, was a rezoning request to plan development, which would have included one use, which would have been the car wash, and the associated conditions that would have gone along with it. City council denied that request, so that's still ongoing, but in terms of why they applied, it was so that the use would be permitted.
Just, I was curious as to when it was added, it wasn't on there at the original, but when we came to the meeting, we added that use on...
That was, that was the entire request, was for that use. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for the dissertation.
Well, thank you.
Tutorial.
It's not just for you guys, it's also for city council. Like I said, you have some complicated issues coming before you, both you guys, as well as council, so I felt it was necessary to do a refresher, but it's good to have one anyway. I know Steve is the newest member, heard a little bit of this, so I hope, I hopefully it was a slight different or variation on the theme, but, as well as Jim Worster. But hopefully, you know, if I can do this every now and then to make sure as a group, because you do ask questions, which is nice too, as a group, and I'm able to, you know, explain to a group, because some people won't ask questions, so it's better for everyone to hear.
No, I think it's very helpful, it's very, very helpful, refresher course. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I would like a discussion of the issue.
Right, well, we need to move approval second and then discussion.
Okay. Second.
Okay. Been made and seconded.
I'll second.
Is there a discussion?
I'm sorry, could I hear what you're...
To approve, to approve the minutes. We're now in discussion. Jim, do you have any discussion?
Yeah, sure do, thanks. Based on what you just told us, I suspicions some of my issues are not allowed, that's my lay term. As we all know, this is a very sensitive issue on this one case, the Pelican Landing case.
Yes.
And I appreciate there are two other cases on them in the minutes, but I'm directing these questions to the Pelican Landing issues. Our board had a unanimous decision to deny the case, and you brought, Mrs. Vance, you brought up the issues that you needed in order to substantiate the denial, and it subsequently passed after some discussion. Now, I've gone back over the tape, and it appears to me, and based on some previous discussion here, these minutes are not necessarily the official record of the meeting, the transcript is the official record.
Correct.
Which is, will validate, if somebody wants to get into the issues, they can get the transcript and bring them up. But it's my opinion that as a part of the minutes, we should elaborate on what you requested, the reason for denial. And as I went back through the tape, of the 10 people that came up with the public comments, I grouped them into groups of items, and I won't bother to go through all 40 of them, but the first group was really a history, then discussion about the buildings, and the environmental, traffic, and then procedures and comp plan issues, and they're kind of set up in issues that various speakers brought forward. And these issues were the reason we felt, I felt, that the denial was the proper vote, and that did not reflect in the minutes. And I, is there some way we can get these incorporated into the minutes as specific items?
I have problems with it, because it's not necessarily the same words that were used. I mean, I understand what you did, and it's well-intentioned. I will tell you that depending on the action, I will be doing, actually, I'll have my appellate attorney doing the same thing, going through the record. This is a good tool for me in that event, but at the same time, a lot of what is here is not substantial competent evidence based on Florida case law.
Okay, can we, can you do that review and come back with this case?
I will only do it if I need to, based on city council's decision. Having me do that, I mean, I'm a small office, I have a lot of, I mean, I don't want to, you know, that's why I'm trying to get you guys to make sure you follow substantial competent evidence. What this does, it's, this is what I consider an argumentative piece, you know, it's trying to state a position, how you feel, I mean, I'm using your words, how you felt, how the outcome of the decision. But it, I'll give an example, number 28, concerned with overloading traffic on Coconut Road in a manner not previously contemplated because of historical low-density zoning in the project area north of Coconut Road, multiple speakers.
Yeah.
That's not what the transportation engineers, now, understand, what I understood the traffic engineers or transportation engineers saying is, we need to evaluate based on the end use of what we plan to do. At that point, we will make commitments of what we need to provide in the, you know...
And that's correct, but at this point, as someone that's going to be helping prepare the presentation for city council, I know that I have one source for the record. If we start looking to make changes to the minutes, I don't want two sources to prepare. Right now, everything's...
Why do the two sources, what?
I don't...
Why is your source?
Right now, the source is the transcript.
Okay, good.
And that's what we're going to be looking at in terms of who said what and what the positions were, and what we're going to address. As long as we can guarantee the accuracy of that, I'm not looking to have a competing source in the minutes, because if the minutes say one thing, and the transcript says something else, I'm not going to say that's a problem in terms of somebody that's going to be legally reviewing it, but it could be a problem in terms of what happens as we're discussing this at the city council.
It can create confusion to city council.
So I just, I, it's not that I don't agree with your intent to provide accuracy in the record. What I want to be careful of is that we don't start looking at having two sources of information, and I'm not saying that it would, but I'm saying right now, you're going to have city council evaluating a lot of information. I want to make this as clear to them as I can in terms of what they're evaluating and how we're going to do this. Changes to the record, I look at the possibility of clouding that clarity, not to say that it would, or that the intentions are poor, but this is something that I really want, at least from the areas that we can control, and from the areas that we can present, to provide as much clarity to them as possible.
Your presentation to the council then will be based upon the hearing...
Included in the transcript.
On the transcript.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to just point out one thing you mentioned a minute ago about the hearing, and the traffic expert that came forward, I'm going from memory now, and that's pretty tough for me, but as I recall, he stated that traffic was not a problem because they're not presenting any more units than was originally anticipated on the existing facility and what they could have built. Therefore, they didn't have to analyze the traffic. He made that statement, because they didn't increase it. Well, that's not an answer, that's...
I think the answer is zoning, as opposed, at zoning as opposed to development order scale.
I think he gave you the short answer and did not provide you the background, and I think that that's probably what happens to all of us when we deal with something on a daily basis, that we do not provide enough as to why we're saying what we're saying.
Yeah, but he presented a, an opinion based upon 20-year-old traffic, or whatever the age of that was.
It is not my job to defend the applicant's traffic engineer, but what I took from that was, a development of regional impact, which Audrey addressed earlier in terms of the review, comes with certain conditions, and comes with certain studies, and certain things that are in place, based upon the size and the type of the development. I believe, at least what I took away from the testimony was, we have gone through that initial review for a number of units that we will never build within Pelican Landing, and those units are associated with certain improvements that have been anticipated from the original approval, and have been modified as the request for development has been modified. And at this particular case, because these units are still under the maximum number that was approved, the conditions that were associated with our traffic still apply, and we do not need new conditions to address those units. You can agree or disagree, and obviously you disagreed.
Yes.
But I think the intent was, as a development of regional impact, certain things are studied, and certain things are evaluated, and certain things are approved, and the number of units in the traffic associated with them is one of them. Therefore, at this point in time, the zoning level, the applicant didn't believe that a full-blown traffic statement that would go through the modeling that Audrey outlined earlier was appropriate. It would be appropriate under what their argument stated at the development order, when they said, we're putting in a certain type of units in this location, and there'll be this many of them, and at that time, all of the information associated with their traffic would be evaluated. That information might or might not have been helpful if you had had at the time, I don't know if that provides any more clarity to you, but that was at least what I took away as their argument.
Well, I felt that he needed to update the study based upon existing traffic counts, and then adding on what's going to be added to the system, and see if his numbers are the same. That's a total false assumption, saying there's no, there's no adjustment.
I would even go a step further than that, and I would like, I would even go a step further than that, and if city council chooses, I would recommend that they also look at not only what's on the ground, but what's under review, but unbuilt right now, because there are several other applications outside of the city of Benita Springs that have submitted traffic studies.
Exactly.
That include at least trip generation numbers. They may not have to the degree of accuracy you'd like to see, but at least those numbers could be included in their study. And I don't think that it would be objectionable for the city council to approve this development, but for the condition that that study be included at time of development order. But that would be up to them.
Okay, thank you. Where do we go trying to get something included in the minutes? Are you suggesting, Audrey, that we don't do anything, or that you sort through what's been presented and pick out?
Yeah, poor Charlie, this is, she's probably never heard this conversation before, but I've had this multiple times. Minutes is a requirement of the sunshine law. It is not a requirement of, I mean, it's not a requirement for purposes of a zoning hearing, other than the sunshine law. Now, with that being said, the minutes could be, there's different theories on taking minutes, she has never probably listened to this before, sometimes minutes are just, you know, one page, you know, just this is what the vote was on each item, other times minutes are a partial to explain kind of the grasp or the feel of what happened here, and then there's what's called verbatim minutes. Now, I will not allow you to order verbatim minutes, I will not allow any council, any council or zoning board, you know, or any advisory board, council can do what they want, to actually order verbatums, because it does take her away from a lot of other work that needs to be done. What you're asking is that your document be supplemented into the minutes, or incorporated into the minutes, and I don't have a problem if you want to have, that this is your position paper into the minutes, but it's not going to be changing what she does, and it's really not part of the minutes.
So if somebody asks...
I mean, you can have it as a document that you prepared, to have it as part of, you know, incorporated into the minutes, I don't have any problem there.
As a public, part of the public record.
Anything you provide is going to be part of the public record.
Okay.
So if you have, let's say we have a voting conflict, you're required to provide it to her as part of the public record. If you have an ex parte contact, you have to provide it to her as part of the public record. So I have no problem adding things to the public record, but as far as saying that you have to decide based on this basis, when this is an after the fact, and not truly reflective of what the council did, then that, or the zoning board did, then that's incorrect. But yes, it could be added to the record.
If the zoning board votes, we can put it in the file, and it will be a part of the file and part of the record.
And it's a reflection of what you saw.
Yeah, it's a reflection of what was said at the meeting last December.
Yes, but it's not the total of what was said at the meeting, it's a partial role of advocacy to try to sway the final decision-maker.
I'll yield to your opinion.
Okay.
But as long as it's a part of the public record, I'm satisfied.
It's added, it's incorporated into the minutes, but she does not have to do anything with it, other than say it's incorporated into the minutes.
Could I ask you, in terms of the minutes, are they part of the package that goes to the council? We're ready for a vote here. The motion has been made to, and seconded, to accept the minutes as written. Roll call, please.
Whoa, 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 with the addition, as a, as a part of the packet, the information that is just discussed.
Mr. Worster's document.
The document that was presented to be attached, to be included as a part of the public record of the meeting.
So you're amending the motion?
Yes, for that one particular issue on the, on the minutes, there's three issues on the minutes.
Right.
But just for the Pelican Landing issue.
It's just the position paper by Mr. Worster. It's just the position paper by Mr. Werster as to how he reviewed the minutes.
Right, right, I understand.
Okay.
So, you're making an amendment to the, to the motion, correct?
Yes.
That amendment needs to be seconded?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the amendment? There isn't.
The motion fails.
We'll proceed with the vote. A roll call, please.
Pete Pastore?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Donnelly?
We're voting on approving the minutes.
Approving the message, yes.
Vice Chairman Donnelly?
Yes.
James Werster?
No.
Stephen Kissinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, is that a majority?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yeah, and that's a great question, because with you guys, I just need a majority of whoever's voting. We're a city council, I always need four.
Four, right, right, okay. Is there any further business? There being no further business, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.